Good afternoon. At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. At this time, I'll ask if any additions or deletions or changes to that agenda?
Mayor, I would like to add as part of my report and council agenda, item number twenty-seven, to adjourn to a closed session at that time to discuss litigation recently initiated against the city of Marshall pursuant to, we can close the meeting pursuant to attorney-client privilege, please.
Any objection to that from the city council? If not, when we get to agenda number twenty-seven, the city attorney report, we will adjourn to closed session. We will then come back out of closed session once that session is completed and continue with the rest remainder of the meeting.
Thank you.
Any other changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We continue to operate under COVID guidelines from Center for Disease Control. So because of that, a number of the council members are participating via distance. So I will call on city clerk Kyle Fox to take the roll call.
Mayor Burns?
Here.
Craig Schaefer. Steve Meister.
Here.
Don Edblum.
Here.
John De Kramer.
Here.
Russ LaBatt.
Here.
Jim Lozinski.
Here.
Craig just walked into the room.
Craig's here.
Here.
The council is, quorum is present, so we will proceed with the meeting. The agenda number two then would be consider approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as they have been presented.
So moved.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Don to approve the minutes as they were presented. We will move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the roll call vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister? Steve Meister? Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda number three. This is the first of several bid awards that we have before us this evening. Agenda number three is Project Z seven eight, the storm structure downfall improvement project. The action before us is the resolution that would accept the bid that would award the contract. I'll call on city engineer, director of public works, Jason Anderson.
Mr. Mayor and Kyle, is Jason on? I know that he was having some technical issues at SMSU this afternoon, so.
We could see Jason, we could not hear him, so.
Okay. Um.
If not, Jared, go ahead. If you want to just give the information, which we do have in our package.
Well, I don't feel comfortable doing that myself, but I could give him a ring and see where he's at or have him call in.
Okay.
Let me do that.
You can do that. I'm going to move then to agenda number four. This would be to consider the award of bids for street department equipment. Bob, are you comfortable covering this? So, Will, Jason, are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I am present.
Now we will move back then to agenda number three. This is a storm structure downfall improvement project, so, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize. Hopefully, my connection is secure and I will see how this goes, but. So the purpose of this project is to install some stormwater manholes at two different locations on our system. One on South Saratoga Street, it's an outfall pipe that manages the majestic pond in the Carr State's neighborhood. And the other, just north of the Redwood River diversion channel and east of US fifty-nine, it services the industrial park area. Both manholes would give us flexibility in high-water events, offering us a location to pump from. And at one location, we'll also be adding in a check valve to prevent a backwater effect into our system, so. Project came in underbid, I believe. I think we've got forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ten cents in the bid, the apparent low bid from RNG Construction. We had an estimate of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. So staff would recommend approval. This is a good project, we believe, and it'll give us a lot of flexibility going forward.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Are there any questions about this recommendation?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If there's no discussion, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Now we'll move to agenda number four. This would be to consider the award of bids for street department equipment. I'll call on Dean Kudron from the street department, unless, Jason, you had something you wanted to say prior.
No, I think I could just introduce the topic by letting you know that we opened bids on April fifth for a wheel loader, an excavator, and a trailer for the street department. We received one bid on the wheel loader. I believe it was one bid, yeah, and two bids on the excavator and three bids on the trailer, so. Dean's here to talk about it, but we did, we did bring it to equipment review and equipment review concurred with our recommendations, but I'll turn it over to Dean.
Yeah, just an update here on this. Like you said, we only got one bid for the big loader. And actually, the same bidder on the loader bid on the caseload or the excavator and the trailer, so we actually only had one bid. On the excavator, we had two bids. The one bid didn't meet all the specs. So with the recommendation, we recommended the three items from Titan Equipment. So and the amounts, the actual loader is, the one we're replacing is a ninety-four, and it's just under fourteen thousand hours on it. So and it's time to get rid of it. It's losing a lot of power and it's starting to cause us some maintenance issues, so. Something we depend on in the winter months very heavily, so. The excavator, again, is another piece of equipment, a lot of safety issues with the one we're using as far as out in the street working with the public. This one here gives us a lot more flexibility. And as far as the trailer, the trailer is a piece of equipment that we need to haul this excavator. We don't have one in the city right now big enough to do that. So if you got any questions, I'll take any questions on any of the equipment.
Thank you, Dean. Any questions for Dean or any comments from the equipment review committee?
Um, I have a comment and I want to say, I want to credit Dean on these bids. He said he physically hand-delivered these packets to the other businesses in town that sell these, and they did not get their bids back in time. That's why there's one. And that's nothing that our staff did wrong, and I just want to make sure the public knows that. You can lead a horse to water, you can't make it drink. So if Dean's hand-delivering these, these bid packets to these dealers and they're not coming back, I mean, our hands are tied. So I just want to make sure that people know that that is why there is one bid. Nobody bid on them. So I just want to express that.
Okay, any other input?
Dean, what are we going to do with the nineteen ninety-four model?
Our plan is to put it on the Purple Wave auction. We've had better luck selling them that way than trading them in.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the question I have would be if the other companies did not get their bids in a timely manner, are we doing them right? I mean, there's two ways we can look at this. We can say, okay, we need to give them a little extra time so that we can indeed get an appropriate number of bids. Or we can say, well, the specs were out, the timeline was here, and they failed, and only one bid came in, so we give it the best. Give it to that bid even though it may not be the best. Just wanted the people to opine on that. I'm anxious for pushback.
And I think Dennis, you have a comment on that.
Councilmember Meister, we did discuss that internally, but now that that bid is out there and to accept bids later, knowing what the low bid is or the only bid is, it's not fair to that bidder to accept late, late bids, so. The decision was made, it's my understanding, one, one, the bidders thought they had until five PM that day to submit their bid, and the bids were due at ten AM. And another bidder forgot about it, so they did not meet the timely requirements and the decision was made. No additional bids would be accepted after ten AM, and we only had one. It was a competitive, it was a good bid, and we accepted it. And we actually reviewed that or talked about that too on the equipment review committee and and the other, the bid that came in late was just returned. It wasn't opened, so there was no drama clause there either. It's. We talked about, is it timely or is it long enough? And, and, and Councilman Meister, we think it is. We think that everything was done absolutely proper. They were given plenty of time and they just didn't get it in.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Other, any other questions? If not, I would entertain, and we can handle this in one motion, a motion on the recommendation for the purchase per the low bid for the loader, the excavator, and the trailer.
Mr. Mayor, could I request that we put those in separate motions, please?
Based on the council member's request, I will honor that and, and open it up for a motion on the recommendation, number one, the loader.
I would still make that motion.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
Don, second.
Seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Recommendation number two, the excavator.
I saw move.
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John to authorize the purchase of the excavator as recommended. Discussion?
Dean, is this still the, the unit that we've talked about before that in the past, we've borrowed the utilities and or rented one?
Yes, it is, same unit.
So when we borrowed from the utilities, is that a not, not a safe unit then?
That is what? I want to say that again.
You, you had indicated in your opening comments that the excavator, it's, the ones we've been using doesn't meet safety requirements, and this one does. So are you saying that the ones that the utilities and or renting would do not meet safety requirements?
No, what I'm saying is our original one that we have, which is a rubberized tired machine. You don't have the options out in the public with that like you do with the excavator where you can swing off the street. But you can park your truck beside or behind or anywhere around this excavator. Where the one we have now, it's got to be either on one side or the other, so we're always out. Seems like we're in traffic more. It, all around this excavator will be a slick machine. I know there's some doubt somewhere, and it's a lot of money. I totally understand that. But the type of work we do, this thing will save time, and in the long run, it'll be here for quite a while.
And the only reason I ask, Dean, is that we're, we're spending a hundred and eleven thousand dollars approximately, and, and it seems to me we could rent these, this piece of equipment for a considerable amount of time for a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So I look at it, is this, is this a need or is this a want, you know?
This is a need, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not going to disagree with you, but I may look at it differently. It's, it's because we've been able to get by without one. We've been able to rent one or to borrow the utility, utility, so it's just my opinion, Dean. Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, we, we did talk about the, the different options of renting and or using the utilities and the renting, it's not always available, and I believe they want to rent by the month.
They do.
Not by the, not by the week or the day. And so we have either a timing issue or by the time we get done doing the rental, it, it's almost more prudent for us to own it, and the rental one's not always available, although they're, they're, they could typically get one. So we did discuss that in the equipment committee and decided that it does make sense for the city to retain ownership of the piece of equipment.
Councilman Schaefer can ask one question. Did the equipment review committee consider leasing this piece of equipment? I mean, like we do with lawnmowers. I mean, I don't even know if it's available. I mean, that we could lease it for a period of number of years and then trade it in for a new one every ten years or something?
We, we didn't actually pursue that, but I, we don't put the same amount of hours, and Dean, maybe you're better to address that than I am, but I know we talked about some of that.
I have not checked into leasing it. Personally, I'm not a lease person. In the long run, I think you're better off owning it, but who am I to say, you know? It's, you guys make that decision. If you want us to pursue that, we definitely can. When you go back to renting the machine, when they rent it at a month, it's usually a month at a time they want it. Fortunately, we've been able to rent it at two-week period. If we rent it for a month, we've had it happen. After a couple of weeks, they say, oh, we sold the machine. We need it back. Now there we are in a dilemma again, trying to find one, so. It's got its pros and cons. I'm not going to argue that a bit, and leasing, I just. I think in the long run, the city is far better off just owning this machine and hanging on to it for a long time.
In the past, I said, in the past, then I requested staff to look at leasing. I think ninety-nine percent of the time has come back where we're better off to own it. Like you said, Dean, we're looking at owning this machine twenty years.
Exactly.
So I know we've looked at in the past, and I've looked at leasing construction equipment for my business alone. And leasing is not, when it comes to construction equipment, I have found it not to be cost-effective, simply because we're hard on the equipment. And it comes back looking bad, so they run into troubles trying to sell it. So I just, that's my experience on leasing.
And the issue, Russ, you bring up with the lawnmower is a good one, but I, the, the, the power or the sell point on that is the fact that we put an extensive amount of hours when those run. I mean, they're running almost constantly all summer long where this equipment doesn't get that same use, so we're not looking at basically their worth going out about the same time that the warranties go.
I just clarification on that. I don't think we lease lawnmowers. We purchase them with the intent of trading them every couple of years. You, you, yeah, they're, they're purchased, we own them, but we get rid of them before the warranties.
Right.
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 Okay, other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. And then recommendation number three, the trailer.
I move the recommendation.
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yeah.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move that agenda number five, to know, item number five is the twenty twenty-one state aid overlay projects. Thank you, Dean, by the way, state aid overlay projects. We have a resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. Once again, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Brief summary, the municipal state aid street program. That's a program that's designed to provide funding to assist municipalities with the construction and maintenance of community interest streets on our city street systems. We do receive an annual allotment of funds that are designated for use on these state aid routes. In twenty twenty-one, we will receive roughly seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for use on these routes. As discussed with council at February work session, our current state aid account balance is advanced against future annual allotments by an amount of two point eight seven million dollars roughly. So to improve the condition on numerous state aid routes as identified in the map in front of you in red. To improve those routes while also continuing to pay back our advances against our annual allotment. City staff has put together this project where we would fund the state aid overlay with a locally issued bond and make advance requests to state aid to make bond payments out of our state aid allotment. So on April ninth, we did receive bids for the project. We had an engineer's estimate of roughly two point two four million dollars. We got two very good bids, one from Dunick Inc. and one from Central Specialties Inc., both within fifty thousand dollars of each other and both very, very good prices. So the low bid was received from Dunick of Prinsburg in the amount of one million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars and forty-five cents. So with this project, there would be no proposed general fund impact. Bonds would be issued locally, but we would coordinate them with stated finance where the bond payments would come out of our state aid allotments as another advance. So if there's any questions, I can answer them, but staff was very pleased with the bids that were received.
Thank you, Jason. Thanks for you and your staff's work on this. Open up for questions? Just, oh, go ahead, John. One question, since this is getting paid back from the, our road funds that we're receiving. Is that why we don't need an intent of reimbursement from expenditures? That may be more of a Sharon or a, a net question, but.
I would defer that to Annette if she's online.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
We can, yes.
Perfect. Jason and I actually just discussed this before. There is a timeframe between when we start paying for the project and when the bond proceeds are received. So I will be double-checking to make sure we don't need that reimbursement resolution, but I can take that to a future council if we aren't within that. I think it's ninety days, but I just need to double-check on that one, but that's a good question, council member.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on the resolution. I'd move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number six, the authorization to purchase a new water truck chassis for the parks department. Preston, are you going to handle this? With us nice from the parks department is Preston Stansfield.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This recommendation, what is in the twenty twenty-one CIP for equipment replacement to replace our nineteen ninety-eight international chassis that we use for watering trees and flowers and then also washing out the shelter houses and stuff in the parks. We did receive bids on April first, and the low bid, it also did go to the equipment review for approval of specs and review, review and approval of the bids. And there, there was five bids received in Boyer Ford trucks out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. Was the low bid in a total amount of forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-nine cents. That includes tax and licensing. I would propose that we sell the existing chassis on Purple Wave, similar to the street shop, selling their equipment. We have had good luck there as well. And we're, we are only allowed twenty-five hundred dollars trade-in on the chassis, and I, I feel we can do better than that. Once, once the chassis does arrive, there will be, I'm estimating five thousand dollars in kind of fabrication work to get the tank mounted and then some plumbing of the pump and stuff like that to get it all reconfigured, but I'm hoping that the, the auction pricing would kind of offset those costs. We did have sixty-two thousand in the budget, so we're going to be close to twenty thousand or so under budget is the hope in the end. With that, I'd just recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Preston. Questions for Preston?
I don't have any questions, Mayor, but I have some comments on this.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, this is a good example of where, where the committee, we're on the, the equipment review committee, I didn't think about it there. Went to Preston, I brought this forward and said, well, what about these options? And, and his staff, they're very open to it, and the example of switching from a diesel engine to a gas engine, which saved the city a substantial amount of money. And it was a good collaboration between the equipment review committee and the staff to bring this, this, this item on the budget, twenty thousand dollars under budget. And I just want to commend the staff and my fellow committee members doing this, and it shows the public, we are looking out for your money on a regular basis. And this is a good example of, we saved twenty thousand dollars by visiting staff and changing some of the specs. The last thing I want to comment on this is I know it's coming out of Minneapolis, and it is a Ford truck. I did visit with Cruz Motors about that today because they had the option to bid it, and I was talking to Stacy, I said, why didn't you bid this? She says she can't even guarantee she'll get this truck by twenty twenty-two. And she says that's why they didn't bid it, because they don't know if they can get it, where Boyer probably has this truck sitting on the ground. So we're not trying to cut out our local suppliers on these. They were frank with me, they said they probably can't get it, so that is, that's the reason why we went up to Boyer. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other input?
Mr. Mayor, question for Preston. Preston, being that our truck is, our old, our existing truck is nineteen ninety-eight, is there anything wrong with that truck?
Mechanically, no, nothing substantial. It just lacks, like, auto returning blinkers that don't shut off, no air conditioning. More so safety features to help cool staff in the summer when you're working on the street and it's a hundred degrees, or so that kind of stuff.
And how about, approximately, how many hours a week is this truck used?
It would vary, but lately, we've been planting significant amounts of trees each year. And when, when we're doing that, I would say it's used five to six hours a day on average, unless we get a really wet week.
So this truck, is, this truck is able to be driven through the parks to water the trees?
In most cases, I would say, yes. Like going on the trails and stuff like that, it would be fine, but like after the rain last week, I wouldn't, you know, drive it across the grass or anything. But it's not so heavy. You, you don't need a CDL or anything. A sixteen, seventeen-year-old can drive this truck.
Ask a question. How many gallons of water will this truck hold?
The tank holds thirteen hundred approximately.
Okay, thank you, Preston. Other questions? If not, what are the council's wishes on this recommendation for the purchase of the water truck for the parks department?
I make a motion, we approve the purchase of the water truck from Boyer Equipment.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items on the consent agenda up on the screen. And those items include calling for the public hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement at 404 West Lyon, calling for a public hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement at 905 Elizabeth Street, application for exempt permit for the Pride and the Tiger Foundation, consider the approval of the 2021, 2022 township fire contracts from the wastewater treatment facility improvement project. We have an application for payment to magnate construction. Consideration of the authorization and declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department. Consider approval of the declaration of the official intent regarding the reimbursement of expenditures with the proceeds and tax exempt bonds. Consider the request for shades of the past car club for June 4th cruise and the June 5th car show. And then consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any on the consent agenda, any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Number 12, please.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Seconded by Craig to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number 12, Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not opposed to the putting the, the things on the surplus. But just to bring the council up to speed on the impala that we put on the state auction, if those of you that might not know it, I think it received in excess of 100 bids and the final selling price was over $6,000. So Mr. Edblum, I'm sorry, we couldn't give it to alter, to crush, but we got $6,000 or over $6,000 for that vehicle. So with that statement, I'll move to approve item number 12, please.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number 16, consider the resolution supporting the telecommuni- supporting telecommuting opportunities forward certification. I'll call it Sharon Hanson for this, our city administrator.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we are aware of a special declaration that the city council can take on to become a telecommuting board community. We know some of our neighboring communities have done this and they've seen some good response to it. We do have our Economic Development Director in house tonight and she can present some further information on the resolution.
Thank you, Sharon. And Lauren Dyce, welcome.
As Sharon mentioned, I am here to bring a resolution in support of telecommuting opportunities and a tele commuter forward certification. So this resolution would just be a piece of our application for the certification through MND. The program was developed, it started as initiative to continue to move towards border to border broadband access. Here in Marshall, we're pretty fortunate that our broadband access is good. However, this certification gives us some other opportunities, including the opportunity to promote ourselves now that we've seen residents and businesses shift towards telecommuting. It opens our community up to some of those opportunities. It also opens up, opens us up for potential future grant funding and some networking opportunities and some training that we wouldn't get unless we did have this certification. Any questions on the resolution?
Well, thank you, Lauren, and thank you for bringing this forward. I think the, from my perspective, and I think we've all seen in the past year and even before, but certainly in the past year, more and more employers that are allowing their employees to work remotely, which opens up a lot of opportunities for communities like Marshall because we do have excellent broadband within the community. And we do have good schools and we have a safe community and we have quality parks. And those are all things that people are looking for when they're choosing a community to work in. And as long as they can work remotely, it doesn't really matter where their employer is, it's where they choose to live. So thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda number 17, the Independence Park Sewer Realignment Project, a grant of sanitary sewer permanent easement. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This is kind of a smaller item, but as we work to get closer to bidding this project, we're kind of tying off some loose ends. You may remember this project is a realignment of some sanitary sewer west of Midwest Bank that today crosses under Highway 23 and then between the culverts and the Independence Pond, just north of the small basin. We are relocating that and realigning that sewer to go out to Nawakama Street, actually. So as part of that project, we needed to identify space to put the pipe and we chose to stay out of Mindat right away and go the route of working with our local business community there, Midwest Bank and Runnings to acquire easements for the location of the pipe. They've been gracious enough to grant us those easements and that's what we're here to have recommended for approval tonight with the council.
Thank you, Jason. Question for Jason?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move that to agenda number 18. Then I, item number 18 is the introduction of the ordinance that amendments related to the placement of shipping containers within the city as well as some other minor miscellaneous ordinance revisions. So again, the action is the introduction of the ordinance and calling for the public hearing. With that, I'll call on Ilya Gudman, if you have any comments on the recommendation to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is just in conjunction with the request for variance that came to the council some time ago. The request was denied because it didn't meet the requirements for granting the variance, but the staff was asked to look into that issue closer, which we did. So we looked at what we have, we looked at the history of this thing, we looked at the other cities and we came up with a way of allowing single container as a conditional use permit in certain circumstances in the general business district. The ordinance is written with some conditions listed. And those conditions mostly relate to location and screening from the public view. It was introduced and presented the legislation with ordinance committee and planning commission recommendation was the council to introduce it in public hearing. I have to know that the ordinance is written will still leave several containers in town not in compliance. So we will have to deal with it somehow later.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Craig.
Yeah, the only question I have is that there was some, some of the language in there, I believe, said that we shall require screening and I believe that I would prefer that to say may. Shall, shall seems like it's an absolute, may seems like we have the option depending on the necessity for screening. Is we're already requiring them to be painted a, an acceptable color and to, you know, look acceptable. So if we're gonna, we're gonna require them to screen them, then why are we requiring to paint them?
Well, the screening will be required only from certain, from public streets and and residential areas. It will not be required from adjacent commercial areas. So it kind of looks like both things are required. Important because it's there, kind of mitigate the containers from different angles.
And a good point, both of you, and well, that would be a good topic at the public hearing.
Yep. Yeah.
Any other questions or input on the recommendation to introduce and call for the public hearing?
I move for the introduction.
Russ?
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to clarify a little bit with Councilman Schaefer said, because it says if, if somebody puts a, a brand new container in an acceptable area, we're still going to require them to put some type of screening around there? Or is that, is that the may or shall situation? Because the way it's written, it says the screening may be achieved by fencing or landscaping means compliant with section 86247. So if, if the container is brand new, are we still going to require the screening?
It depends where it is. If it's not visible from public streets or residential area, then no. Then it says, no, we will not require screening. However, if it's visible from the, from public street, for example, then yes. So it depends on where it is. In some cases, it may not be required. In some cases, it will be required.
Let's take the hypothetical situation that this all came up with the Monty Budgeur application. If he put a brand new container back where he first originally wanted, would he have to screen it? Because that area would be visible from the middle school parking lot, but not from the street.
Correct. So it will be required on the side of the school, but not on the side of the street.
And again, Russ, I'm, I'm following where you're at and I think we're on the same page, but I guess, I mean, I think this is, and the mayor's correct, this will be addressed during the hearing, but I have those same questions or concerns. And you- This did come up with the planning commission, what does shall mean and what does may mean? And Mike Fox brought something that shall means may. And I disagree because state statute and rule, there shoulds and shals and mayes and cans and- But he said there, and I haven't read the case, but apparently he said there's some- Well, I don't want to go to the Supreme Court with containers, so. Well, no, but it was defining shall to mean may. Right. And, and I, I disagree with that interpretation. I do too. Yeah.
So Craig, I think earlier I interrupted you when you were just about to make a motion.
Yeah, I, I move that we, that we bring this forward for
Introduce.
For introduction and then call for the public hearing.
I would second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number 19, the request to move a dwelling to a residential district at the location of 416 Brussels Court. I will note that the applicants are, are present at the council meeting, but I will call Ilya Gudman to present this.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So this is a request by the owner to move the house from nearby town to around near Marshall to 416 Brussels Court. It's a lot at the corner of Brussels Court and Vienna Circle. It's a one story ranch house, walkout basement, which will not be there. It will be put on the new basement built in the location. This request is based on the ordinance requirement that all existing houses moved into town should be reviewed by the council for the point of, from the point of appearance, if they fit the area where they're being moved in. This house will get new siding and roofing and it's kind of really difficult to make a judgment about what, how it fits because there are really no other houses nearby. But in the larger vicinity, it looks like it's okay. However, the since it's aesthetic issue, it's clearly within council prerogative. We don't want to make any recommendation for this thing except for public hearing.
And it was, was gone through by one of the building inspectors.
Correct. You can see the inspection report and the pictures of that thing and the plan.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. The, any questions the council has on this request?
I'll make a motion to call for the public hearing.
Second. Is that the actual?
Yep.
Yes. Motion by John, seconded by Craig to call for the public hearing on the request to move the dwelling. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number 20, consider the resolution providing for the issuance and sale of the city's general obligation bonds, Series 2021, 20A and 2021B. I'll call on Annette Storm.
Thank you, Mayor. For tonight's consideration, the resolution for the issuance and sale of the resolution or of the general obligation bonds, 2021A and B. As you can see with the summary there, the 2021A bond will finance two street reconstructions, the Patriot Park Bathroom and Shelter Project, two pieces of equipment and the Fire Hall Station Re Roof Project. The reason that we needed to do two separate bond issuance, we broke it out for the state aid mill and overlay project as that will have a different payback schedule with the state's timing. So we will be doing two separate bond issuances. After tonight, the next step would be the city would go through a bond rating call and then bids will be received for the bonds that will be brought back to council in early May for final consideration. If anyone has any questions or anything, I'll be happy to try and answer them to best of my ability.
Thank you, Annette. Questions?
Annette, I have a quick question here. We're, this is a $2.3 million bond, correct?
On the 2021B bond?
Well, the total bond altogether is approximately 2.3 million.
That would be just the, the 2021B, 2021A is 1.9 million. So the two together would be the total bond issuance.
Oh, so the two together, give or take rough numbers, 4.3 million?
Correct.
How much debt do we pay off every year?
I'm not prepared to answer that question.
I just want to know if we're going forwards or backwards in our debt reduction.
So if you consider the city debt as a whole, you know, we've got some major projects going on. The wastewater facility would be one of them. So when you look at it as a whole, we are issuing more debt than we are paying off currently. It's kind of a short answer to your question.
Councilman Lozinski, in 2020, we issued about $16.6 million of the bonds and we paid off about 9.4. I do not have 19 and 18, but I've got 17. We issued 5.7 and we paid off 18. So we did not make progress in 2020.
However-
Those, those figures are total, total debt, total bond debt and that came directly from the county.
Yeah, so that the 2020 was mostly revenue bonds that are secured by revenue from both water and wastewater. So for the, the major projects that we have at both of those entities, so.
Again, those revenue bonds, Mr. Mayor, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, still get paid back by you and I writing a check every month to the utilities, correct?
Yeah, I think the, the, the real question was what is general obligation as opposed to revenue, so.
And I guess the, the second part of that question, this is going to kind of go towards you, Sharon Hanson, Ms. Hanson, is we've talked about paying for some of the city equipment. I know you've talked about out of cash, so we're not bonding so much. As we look at these- As we look at these bonds, and I know we're not doing vehicles, but how are we coming doing paying for equipment instead of bonding for it? And I know that was one of your goals when you came on as city administrator.
Well, I would say that we are still, we're still utilizing general levy for equipment. What we're trying to do over a period of time is build up a fund balance for street overlays and street construction. As you may remember, the last two years, maybe three, and Annette can correct me or add into this, we've added additional money in the levy to build up that that balance so that we can bond less for for some of this work. The one thing I'll comment on is when we had our long term debt study, I believe it was a ten to twenty year plan. And if we were going to do a ten year, it meant some pretty large levy increases in order to overcome some of the debt. And what we face every year is a lot of pressure on the other end to to not raise the levy. And I certainly understand why we want to be conscientious of of the additional levy each year. And obviously, there's always additional pressures by our residential and business community, and and that's always taken into consideration. But we really need to take a long view of our debt reduction. And I know Annette and I have talked about, maybe at some point here in the near future, we kind of review that debt schedule and that debt reduction plan again, and have a more in depth discussion at a work session on kind of what it's going to take and on a year to year basis and how long we got to do it. But for sure, we had two large projects that get noted under the city, which is wastewater and water. And the pressure on that is is we got MPCA regulations to comply with and aging infrastructure. So but yeah, good questions, and we probably should really dive into it. We 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 can cover the county, the county's required reporting document. We can look at comparable cities. We can talk about why Marshall may be different than other communities, such as being a community that has flooded in the past. We don't have a lot of grade, so stormwater is are is bigger issues here in addition to everything else we face, but we can certainly cover that.
Thank you. Now, on the flip side of that, I do have another flip side of that. I do know with low interest rates, I believe last year, Annette, we were under one percent on our bond for interest, correct? That it is, it is a good time to still take advantage of low interest rates replaced, such as the loader, which is twenty five years old. So so as interest rates go up, we are not bonding at that point and hopefully paying for stuff because interest rates eventually hit three, four percent again. I mean, I'd be surprised if we're under one percent this year, but we're not going to be much, I'm assuming not much higher than that. So on the flip side of that, bonding right now is not bad, and that's coming as a business matter. I went and refinanced majority of my stuff for lower interest rates simply because it is a huge savings to replace equipment now and not when it's high interest rates.
Thank you. Other input? I would entertain a motion on the resolution that would provide for the issuance of the sale of those general obligation bonds, series A and B twenty twenty one.
I will move with the resolution.
Motion by John?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Agenda number twenty one, consider the authorization to install batting cages at Independence Park. Once again, I'll call Preston Stendrude from the Street Department or from the Parks Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This kind of came up here in the last month or so. MABA is looking to expand the facility out at Independence Park. The two existing batting cages that are there now have been around since, I don't know, maybe the nineteen ninety five, late nineties, something like that. And because of the association keeps growing, they just aren't getting enough contact time with kids hitting and getting that one on one. So they they would like to expand and add two more batting cages. We do use some hitting clinics that we do like through the school district, and there might even be a community services heating clinic as well. But their their intent is to keep expanding facilities so we can keep hosting these tournaments and keep keep drawing people to Marshall. They would like to move forward with getting this installed for the season to be able to use. And like we've done in the past for things such as the scoreboards, the bleachers, we've done tile, numerous other projects out there, kind of in partnership. Normally, those have been kind of a split fifty fifty cost. MABA would propose to put fifteen thousand dollars towards this project. If we move forward, they would write a check to the city for the first five thousand right away, and then pay back the other ten thousand either next year or in twenty twenty three at the latest, depending on how long the COVID stuff stays around. They didn't have a very good year last year, of course, but the the need is still there. So with that, it's like a total cost of about seventeen thousand five hundred after you put in all the fencing and get the posts in to hang the nets and buy in the nets and stuff like that. So we would pay the upfront cost, and then MABA would pay us back for the fifteen thousand over a maximum of three years. Would that take questions or just recommend approval to move forward to? If you're familiar with the site out there, the one batting cages on the Onlet Field off to the left. When you walk up to the gate, this one we kind of matched, but go the other way, off to the right. There's kind of a big gravel area, and then I think when we're done, we might try and seed that whole area so we can stop some erosion that's going on there now, so.
Thank you, Preston. Questions for Preston?
Not necessarily a question, but a comment.
Go ahead, Craig, and then Steve, and then Russ.
So I know that, you know, Preston and I talked about this earlier, and you know, MABA and Maha, all of the clubs, the sport youth sport clubs that we work with, have done a really good job of stepping up and and participating both financially and and obviously with their time and talents. And this is, I think, another really good investment, especially looking at coming out of COVID and getting the kids back out and going, and and I think it's a real solid proposal. Also, in talking to Preston, by Preston being creative with kind of the timing on things like the pickups not becoming available this year, we're switching around some of the equipment purchases, which doesn't change the budget, but it frees up about fifteen thousand dollars difference this year that wouldn't have been there because we're we're getting rid of one more expensive purchase and moving it out a year or two. This actually fits in good, so there's no real impact to our budget. It would just be paid back into reserves and then used later on. So I think it's a, I think it's a good solid proposal, and I certainly support it.
Thank you, Craig and Steve.
Yeah, and I was going to say, maybe it'll pay five thousand dollars almost immediately for its upfront cost will not be the seventeen thousand five hundred, it'll be about twelve thousand five hundred. Again, I think that the way that these kids are using it and the attraction that we're getting from other teams coming in, especially with COVID, when it opens up, we're going to, the more we can sell Marshall on it with all the great spaces we have, this is just a wonderful thing. So I speak in favor of this.
And Russ, you had a comment?
I'd just like to echo what Craig and Steve said, and just a question for Preston. Is it, will this be a third party installer? Is is parks going to help at all? Just kind of curious.
We're going to kind of take the best of all worlds. I got three quotes on fencing. R and W fencing would do it out of Brookings, and they would install the posts. We would buy the nets and the turf that goes like in the batting cage area where the player stands through or borchers. They were the lowest on the supplies, and then staffing would do the grading and moving of the ag lime in and kind of the final fine tuning of it, similar to our other projects. So kind of a little bit of both.
Thank you, Preston.
With that, are there any other questions for Preston?
I move to authorize to install the batting cages at Independence Park in cooperation with MABA.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number twenty twenty two is the review and consider the adoption of the ash tree replacement program. Once again, I'll, we'll start with Preston and then Kelly, and you can introduce. And the while you're coming up, I'd say I know a lot of work has gone into this and a lot of, you know, personal education as well as research on the movement and the threat of Emerald Ash for our tree population in this community as it already has threatened other communities. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Like the mayor mentioned, this is kind of, I think we kind of started back in two thousand eleven after that storm that we lost a lot of trees. We 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 implemented planting, and we kind of started then not planting clumps of a bunch of the same trees. We made sure we didn't plant rows. We were diver diverse in planting and picking stuff that also grows well here so that hopefully we kind of did the Dutch elm disease thing, and then we replaced them with a bunch of ash all in a row, and now we're going to lose all the ash. So hopefully, the next thing, at least it's more sporadic instead of losing, you know, fifty percent of one park or something and all the trees in it. And like you mentioned, education wise, it goes on and on, but E V is Emerald Ash Bor is getting closer. Kelly and I had the opportunity to go to Worthington about two weeks ago. They have it. We got to see trees there. You could pull back bark and literally see the larva crawling out of the tree. And it's going to, it's going to affect us greatly. And Kelly, as part of her doing the tree inventory and stuff through the Green Corps program, has put together an ash tree replacement program that other cities are doing. I know Worthington has one and several other more so metro because it's been there longer, but just kind of gets a plan in front of us so that we're better prepared when it gets here. And we're certainly open to changes and stuff. This is kind of get it, the ball rolling, I guess I'd say. So I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you. So as Preston said, I'm Kelly Hefendal. I am a Minnesota Green Corps member serving here with the City of Marshall. And one of the things I've been working on is the ash tree replacement plan. So I wanted to give a little bit of background on Emerald Ash Bor. Emerald Ash Bor is a non-native invasive beetle from Asia that invades and kills ash trees. Minnesota alone is home to nearly one billion ash trees, and as ash trees have no immune response against Emerald Ash Bor, this beetle has been killing and will eventually kill all of the trees in Minnesota. So the life cycle, how it works, adult Emerald Ash Bor beetles lay eggs on the bark, and then when those eggs hatch as larva, they burrow into the tree where they tunnel under the bark, creating S shaped galleries. And then these tunnels cut off the flow of water and nutrients that are trying to make its way through the tree. So these tunnels are girdling the trunk and the branches, which ultimately kills the tree. At this time, Emerald Ash Bor has not been discovered in Lyon County. However, it is in Nobles County, like in Worthington. It's also in Cottonwood County as well as Brown County, and all of those confirmed infestations are approximately sixty miles away from Marshall. The beetle on its own flies about one mile per year, but its main spread is human transport. It's been, it's being transported by infested firewood. So unfortunately, this pest will make its way here to Marshall inevitably, whether it's by its own spread or by human transport. And so many cities and counties have ash tree preparedness plans in place that suit their needs. And for the City of Marshall, what we've worked on is the plan is to remove ten percent of the ash trees over a ten year span, and the estimated cost of removal per tree is eight hundred and fifty dollars. To give you some context, last fall, I interviewed four thousand and three trees, and seven hundred and forty three of them were ash. So that's about nineteen or twenty percent. Four hundred and seventy of those ash trees were in the city parks. That is all trees, so that includes both deciduous and coniferous. If you take out the conifer tree numbers and you calculate that, ash tree makes up one third of the deciduous tree population here in Marshall. So because of the high number of ash trees, whenever the dashboard does arrive, it is going to have a high impact on Marshall's tree population. Removing ash trees is only one part of this, and that's why we have the ash tree replacement plan so we can plan to have tree plantings to replace the ash trees that are removed. So when replacing the ash tree like Preston said, diversity is key. Having that diversity of tree plantings is one way to preserve a community's urban forest. When there is a high number of species, the likelihood of a pest or fungus decimating that entire population is very likely. We are also implementing a gravel bed growing area at the Parks Department shop in the spring. So this is going to help Marshall have a more diverse tree canopy. We will be growing a hundred and ten trees in that gravel bed, and then we'll be planting them at a later date. These are tree tree species that aren't as common in Marshall, but they are likely to thrive in this climate alone. So the impacts that Emerald Ash Bor will have on the ash tree community here in Marshall are are very great. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Kelly.
So, Mr. Mayor, my question is, what are the variety of species that we're going to replace? Because there's no question Marshall is going to be changed with Ash Bor, and it's going to be soon. So what kind of trees are we looking at?
The Department of Ag and the D N R has a list of trees likely to thrive in each zone of Minnesota. Marshall is zone five, and that includes like Kentucky coffee tree, disease resistant elms, quaking aspen, and things in the populous species, as well as conifers. But in other deciduous trees, it's a lot of no maples and some oaks, so.
Thank you.
I I have a quick question here. With if we approve this program, we aren't going to start cutting trees down until we actually have the Ash Bor in Marshall, correct?
The Department of Ag recommends not cutting ash trees down until it's the confirmed infestation is within fifty miles of your location. So it's currently sixty miles away, but we don't see signs of an Emerald Ash Bor infestation until about year two or year three. So not to say we have it, but there's a chance that it could have already been transported here, and we just don't know it yet.
Have we had Emerald Ash Bor traps out in Marshall to check that?
Um, yeah, we have numerous seasons, and they haven't came back with any positive tests, which is a good thing, obviously. But I don't believe last year they did it anywhere, but they have a chemical they put on there that attracts the bug. But yeah, we we haven't had any signs of any bugs here, which is, like I said, is good. As far, I'll back up to your question about cutting down trees now. My personal belief is that we should cut down some of the more unhealthy old trees because it's likely to attack that anyways. And they're going to decay faster, which could lead to other liability and safety hazards. But I wouldn't suggest cutting down, you know, a nice, mature, healthy looking tree.
You might could add to that, Kelly and Preston, I think the, you know, the ash tree replacement program is really limited to or targeted at public property, so parks and and some other pub public property where there, in some of our parks, we do have a high population. And in some of those parks, those trees were transplanted in as more park quality, so less desirable. And some of those trees, which is also kind of an indication or a predictor of the health of the tree, when we've had strong winds, have been shown to be more brittle and are losing larger branches and which makes you suspect that. which makes you suspect that there's something else going on with that tree. Maybe that's a disease. Maybe that's something caused by Emerald Ash Boron. So those would be good trees if they're in our parks. If they are removed and replaced with a species that will be there for the next generation. But I think it's a good idea to kind of be proactive. So when it does come, we're not faced with removing 1,000 trees in the community or disposing of 1,000 trees.
Many communities are doing it different too, Jim. I mean, some Sioux Falls, they're just in the process of cutting down every ash tree they have. They're just going down the road and if it's an ash tree, it's gone. It doesn't matter. But other ones are focused more on areas where they found it and try and kind of eradicate it there. So it's kind of just up to us, but I think we're better to be a little proactive. Not necessarily, like I said, cutting down healthy trees, but there's definitely some old raggedy looking ash trees that it probably won't hurt if they're gone.
Following up with Steve's earlier question, if I could just add one thing on Steve's question. The, there's been a lot of advancements in tree species that will work in not only southern Minnesota, but in southwestern Minnesota where we have extremes in temperature and extremes in wind. And one of those is the, is elm trees that are resistant to Dutch elm disease. There was a reason why they were predominant in southwest Minnesota. And now there's a number of really good varieties that are available.
So we're gonna get Swedish elm now?
Go ahead, Jim.
I always, I like that idea, press to be proactive, but not to cut them down because as time goes on, we also, we cut them all down. Also, the University of Minnesota comes up with, well, we can kill these somehow, or else we just hope for really, really, really cold winter. Cold kills them too. We just need about two weeks of 25 below zero and we'll get rid of most of the ash for.
So maybe it, this is a, maybe a little off tangent, but so as we move forward and we, and we cut these trees out, what do we do with the tree, with the cut down tree? Is there, is there any beneficial reuse of the, of the material or is it too dangerous to move it?
If we're not in a quarantined area, which we're not because we don't, haven't discovered it here, we can move it. However, there's recommended time for cutting ash trees. And off the top of my head, I think it might be October to April 1st or something like that. If you're in a quarantined area, then I believe they have to cut down and either chip it all on site or burn it. They can't haul it anywhere. And if it gets here, it could pose some issues for us.
And that was kind of where I was headed with it. I mean, I, I know like with storm, with, with severe storm damage, a lot of times we've been able to take, as long as it's not full of storm debris, chipped and then take it to like St. Paul Energy or somewhere else to actually get a beneficial reuse of the wood.
Yeah. And we could, we could look into stuff like that, especially if there's people that they want it, you know, and just haul it. And then we don't have to, if we can make a pile or something, I mean, I think there's ways to figure that out.
Right. Okay.
Greg, if you ever watched the movie The Natural, I believe he made his baseball bat out of ash. We can make them all into baseball bats.
Well, if you make it, they'll come and play.
We talked about, you know, you look at like some of these things like Independence Park and stuff where there's almost 200 of them. Are we going to be doing any planting adjacent to or in the area of these trees to be the replacement? Before we take the tree out, are we going to wait until after the tree's out?
We've kind of started doing that in spots where we started kind of putting, filling in the gaps, but it's not in a. Oh, yeah. Buddy planting. So yeah, between the ash trees, but not in every location. We did a lot of it when we got that DNR grant. And then now that's kind of our intent with the gravel bed growing that we can get the trees cheaper, grow them in the gravel bed and then transplant them from there out. That'll give us some time, especially with the healthier trees. But we included pictures in there of some parks and you brought up independence, but I think, Kyle, I'm not sure if you could go to like, is it the library? Maybe. There you go. 18 of the 29 trees are ash. So basically all of them along Saratoga, just take every single tree out of there. And that's what it's going to look like. There'll be nothing, nothing there. I believe the fire hall is pretty close to the same way. Legion Field, the Shelter House area downwards, all shade. That basically is going to be all wide open. There would be nothing left. So we can plant trees, but they're definitely not going to replace the 50-year-old trees. It's going to take a long, long time.
So they get started anyway.
That'll look of, the landscaping is just going to be significantly different.
Other questions?
Sounds like a good project for a boy scout eagle, eagle scout project.
Just a lot of. Well, thank you, Preston. Thank you, Kelly. I think just a note about Kelly's has put a lot of work into this project. I think to the, been an outstanding product that you've worked on. So if there's no other comments, I'd entertain a motion on the adoption of the ash tree replacement.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Gen number 23, council member, board commission, reports, the regional development. Did you meet by, by Zoom? The, I know I reported before, the COVID revolving loan fund that was there was $1.48 million that was received for lending in the region to businesses that were impacted. And with very favorable rates and the, the goal has been to utilize all of that funds. And, you know, get it working for the purposes that was intended by May 6th, which is one year from the authorization and we're on target of getting that done. And the revolving loan fund committee will meet again next week. Also, I represent the Regional Development Commission on the Southwest Area Transportation Partnership, and I chair that district ATP. The, and they had their meeting this past Friday to really approve the next round of recommendations of federal and state projects. And so that's for the entire district day, but certainly there's some of those projects are not only within Marshall, the 2025 reconstruction of Highway 19 through Marshall is one of those. But then there's others that are, are near and around Marshall, including the rehabilitation and of the concrete surfacing on Highway 59, south of Highway 23, as well as the widening of the, in addition, widening of the shoulders on Highway 68 between Marshall and Minnetonka. With that, we'll continue on. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have, none of my groups have met, but I think everybody probably saw the article in the Independent about the Southwest Minnesota Fire Conference that was hosted here. And I didn't get out here for it, but I heard a ton of good feedback. And of course, there's a great, great article in the Independent, a lot of great quotes. And I think that just speaks very, very highly for Jasmine and for what's happening here at Merritt and kind of looking forward. I also spoke to Jim Marshall a little bit about kind of the future of Merritt. And I know that him and Jasmine are talking a lot about kind of what is our transition here with the combining of the CAT team to the fire department, you know, we're going to relocate some equipment, which is going to open up some, some new opportunities here also. So I think it's very positive to, to kind of have things move and move forward. So pretty exciting about what's happened out here. And I just, again, the addition of having a coordinator here and just focusing on, on moving, going, you know, getting things moving and Lakes Area Technical College out of Brainerd did a fantastic job with the, with the fire training. And I know we actually had metro departments here too that were pretty excited. And that's a huge stamp is they have, they have other options available, the regional, the outstate departments. I'm not as surprised about their evaluation, but when the metro gives you that high appraise, that's, that's very high praise. So I just want to commend everybody for that. That just speaks very well for the center.
Thank you, Craig. Steve?
So Cable Commission did not meet, Community Services Advisory Board did meet. We are arduously discerning proposals for pool development and our water park development. And more, more to come on that as we get on to it. We have visits to a couple of places. We've narrowed it down from a total of 13 to three. And going forward on that, some more to come on that. EDA, we didn't meet.
Very good. Don?
The Fining Commission's meeting for tomorrow night have been postponed due to no items on their agenda. And the Public Housing Commission had a meeting last night, but I was unable to attend.
And John?
Say, EDA did not meet and MMU has not met since our last meeting. Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission did meet. And the resignation of the one co-chair, Nancy Straw, who her and her husband are leaving the area. And she is being replaced by another co-chair, Joyce Tofti. Will be filling that role. And also there was a survey of the commission to review kind of next steps and goals and put a priority on where our goals are. And last item on that was now I lost, look to Kyle, remember what the, oh.
We did have a grant.
Oh, yes. We joined in on a grant to get the request, equipment in a park, playground equipment that is equitable to all the kids, whether the wheelchair or whatever. So we joined in on that one. It's kind of one that came up quick and we had to move on. And so that was approved and co-signed on that grant. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you, John. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only one of my commissions I met was Library Board and we met last evening. Good news, the branches now in Cottonwood and Ballaton are now open on Wednesdays only with limited hours, and they've gotten some good feedback on that. Effective on May 1, the Marshall Library will start be opening on Saturdays with limited hours. And also effective on May 1, they're going to allow people to be in the library versus to one hour versus a 30 minutes. It's presently in place. So it's good news that we're moving forward via the COVID situation. There are also on May 1, there're going to be a gradual reopening of the children's area. But they're maybe looking at that late fall for the end of the year before that will be finally be open. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And Jim?
The only one of mine that met was City Hall Committee and a little update on City Hall. We, as a committee, are still working with the contractor and the contractor on some change orders. There's some small ones still coming. There's also some that they have, we've negotiated better outcomes for the city. There's one, now I don't want to say significant, but there's one $9,000 to $10,000 one coming over leveling the floor on the second level. We are still working with the contractor. You know, we're not seeing eye to eye on that change order yet. They have not brought it forward yet. So we actually have not seen it. We know it's floating out there. Other than that, City Hall is coming along very well. I am hoping, and Sharon, I think you can touch on this, but they're still going to turn over City Hall to us May 3rd. I am hoping that our first meeting in June, we are all together in our new City Hall. I miss any extra rest for all these meetings. I have no way to keep me awake. So I'm hoping our first meeting in June, we are actually in our new City Hall. And I think we're still on schedule. They tell us we're still on schedule for that. So I look forward to and three more meetings, having us all together again.
That's good. We'll then move on to council member individual items. Craig, let's start on your end.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to bring up is that, as start to have a conversation again, now that spring is here, some of the housekeeping issues around some of the residences. Lot of, lot of stuff piled up. And I know that the policy is typically to the complaints to the public works or engineering, building officials. And I would like to have us have the ability to counsel our employees about kind of what are some of the thresholds to look for. And I think that as city employees, they don't, I don't want to make them the junk cops, but I think that we do a disservice to our residents if we wait until things get so bad in their neighborhood that they have to complain to the city about it. And I think if we have, we have good staff that get around town. If they see something, they should be able to put it on a checklist and get a check. And if it's valid, that's a complaint. And I just think that we can get a lot more cooperation if we start out that way. It's better for the people who have the problem because it's not, hopefully it doesn't create a bunch of angst in the neighborhood before it gets solved. So I'm hoping that it builds for better relations and just trains people to be a little better about picking up some of the debris. And some of it's pretty bad. Oh, it's pretty bad. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Steve?
I have nothing.
Done?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, Jim?
A couple of things. The first one I have is I was visiting with Preston today. I was brought up, brought up before, but the Merle, the picture on the pub. I was sitting there thinking, I'm going to be visiting with my favorite band directors, having food outside the pub, looking at a faded picture. Preston told me that the city, that his department is actually working on putting the new Merle up there. We have one. It's paid for. We own it. And he told me they're working on that. So when I go out there in May, we should be hopefully looking at a nice, bright, colorful picture on the side of the pub. The second thing is kind of a personal thing. I just, as a parent, I was going to say, my whole family's been vaccinated. And to me, as a father, having all of his children vaccinated against COVID is a good feeling. We are actually planning a big get together where we're all going to get together without masks Mother's Day because the CDC says we can do that. And I want to encourage people to get vaccinated. And again, as a, as a parent with four kids, three in-laws and, and once, you know, it feels good to have us all vaccinated. I just want to give that plug for vaccination.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jim. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In reference to Administrator Hanson's comments earlier regarding our bond situation, I just want to bring the council, and again, this is total debt. As of December 30th, 31, 2020, Welmer had $131 million in debt, Marshall at 74 million, Redwood Falls, 24 million, Fairmont at 47 million, Alexandria at 39, Norm had 23, Worthington had 9 million and Wasika had six. So again, and that's, and a lot of people, you know, when I ran for city council, one of my priorities was to reduce debt. And at that time, a lot of people thought this included the school debt, but it does not. So in addition to the $74 million in debt that the city currently has, and again, it's revenue debt, it's general obligation, it's a whole works. The school debt is another 51 million. So overall, this community's got a lot of debt and, and we, to continue to be progressive. It sometimes can be costly, but I think we need to, we need to be transparent with our citizens and let them know upfront of why we do things. And, and I think the city staff, and then we talked about equipment tonight. And I think sometimes we, we have to take a look at that and whether it's a need or whether it's a want and, and, you know, it's tough decisions that we as elected officials have to make. But I, I think that we just always have to be, be aware of the situation and I commend Administrator Hanson for willingness, her willingness to take a look at it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. And John?
You know, we talked a number of times about, it was brought up tonight again, putting items out on an auction and getting the results. And I think Russ, you were, made the comment on one of them, the results, but it might be nice just to get a listing to the council of, okay, how did we turn out on these things? We put them out, just, you know, what did we get for them? Is it worthwhile doing? So just put that on as a request, nothing elaborate, just the, you know, simple listing of how things went.
Sounds good. Anything else, John?
No, that's it.
So just a, a quick comment. I think there was an article today about the, the progress on the water softening project at the wastewater plant. That's roughly a $14 million project. There was a $7 million. That's roughly a $14 million project. There was a $7 million grant that was received. We actually lobbied and to present that quite hard. I remember lobbying on the coldest day of the polar vortex for that, that project. But that's an example of one of those projects that simply does cost money. There's other projects we have more control over. But that was a project that, you know, in order to reduce the chloride level in our water system that is eventually going through our wastewater system, that it simply does cost money. There are other areas where we have probably a little more latitude. You know, one of those is equipment that we talked about. One of those is quite honestly our public street projects. And we've had, you know, lots of discussions on, do we overbuild streets? Do we build them wide or do we build them more narrowly? And certainly that it has a direct impact on, on the spending level that we have as well as the amount of debt that is necessary to cover the non-assessed portion of those, those projects. So it is a complex issue and as has been stated before, I think our staff are really working hard on this issue. With that, I think we'll move then to staff reports.
Bob? But I have a quick question and you can help clarify this. And that $74 million debt, that also includes MMU's debt, correct?
That is correct, yeah. And the largest portion of their debt, quite honestly, was the water acquisition project from the Sanus Well Field. The 27 miles of piping that came into the community. I think that was about 22.
I think that 22 million.
Right.
Well, and the reason, the reason I ask that is I know some of these other communities do not have public utilities. So to be fair to Apple, the apples, we should separate out the MMU debts if we start comparing cities that do not have public utilities.
Right, yeah. And they also, MMU took on a considerable amount of investment that was financed over time and paid for, as was earlier said by rate payers. But for the, putting the electrical distribution system underground and the result of that, of course, we have a highly reliable electrical system, a 99.99% reliability. That's important for not only our residents, but it's really important for our industries that really have processes that can't be interrupted. Jim, I don't know that, that's...
That doesn't answer my question. I just brought that up because I, we built in other communities and working with Excel Energy is, they're not any cheaper and we could technically sell our, our utilities to a private investor and dump that debt. I don't think our citizens would be happy, but that, that's the point I was making is, is I understand debt is debt. But a chunk of this is public, is utility debt, which is a sellable item to, I'm sure there's a utility that's coming here and snatched it up in a heartbeat.
And obviously with, you know, being liaison with MMU, it's pretty obvious when you sit in on those meetings. MMU is bringing in a lot more cash into the city through transmission agreements, through a whole lot of other things. Some reason about $5 million this past year comes to mind. And I can't place exactly what everything's for, but they do, you know, a very sizable addition or asset to this, this community.
I would, I, I, Mr. Mayor, I would, and, and being a former member of the Utilities Commission, being a former councilman back in the 90s, being around the utilities, basically since 1992. My former boss, Gary Becker, was a longtime member of the Utilities Commission. So I, I cut my teeth on the city by, by, by going through the Utilities Commission first. And I would say, if you did a survey of the Minnesota Municipal Utility People in Minnesota, that Marshall would be rated either probably in the top two or three run utility departments in the whole state of Minnesota. And you could probably put that out probably through, you know, the whole Upper Midwest. This is an excellent, excellent utility operation that we have. One of the best you'll ever find. We have excellent employees. And just remember that when, you know, when you're talking about utilities and the people that run the corporation here, they are the finest of the finest and they do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. The other point I was going to make as part of my report is, you know, we're in, even though it's chilly today, we're into spring and with spring in Marshall really comes new construction. And there's a lot of construction, both commercial and residential, that is either started or, or will be started soon. That should be quite a active year for construction. And the, you know, so our building staff or building inspection staff, our plan review staff will be, will be highly busy. And sometimes we, we hear questions about, you know, some of the fees and building permits. I recently thought of building permit. And I also have a family member that took out a similar building permit in another community. And that person's building permit fee was four times what my fee was in Marshall. So I think our fees are, are competitive, at least in my experience. With that, let's move on then to Jason. Do you have anything you want to add this evening?
No, I think I would just...
See you, Sharon.
The, I didn't see Sharon here. Staff reports, our city administrator, Sharon Hanson, my apologies, jumping right over you.
This is why I don't want to be gone too long on vacation because you guys get used to maybe not having me around and get comfortable. So just to respond a little bit to some of the conversations. City Hall is still on schedule. They still anticipate turning the building over to us first week in May. Staff are still planning on making moves in the middle of May. That would be existing furniture and some new furniture. The Kyle Box has been helpful in organizing some IT work, everything from our postage meter to the copy machine, all things that we need to really operate on a day-to-day basis. And it's down, down to the micro level. Still have a little bit of concern about, you know, when we're going to be fully operational there. We have to make sure that the elevator is certified and working. The building inspection department, our very own building inspection department, has to ensure that we have a, a certificate of occupancy before we can be in there. So the thought of maybe moving one or two staff while they're still maybe working on some things, that's not going to work. But my, we're still on schedule and I think the contractor, I'm thinking they must have another project. They, they really need express that they, they want to complete the project at that time too. I think there's selfish desire on, on, on the part of the contractor. Just briefly on, on long-term debt, I said we can set up a work session and definitely cover a lot of things. It's certainly a balance, as most of you have expressed already. When, if you would talk to Annette one-on-one, not in the public eye, and we look at long-term debt, she would say that you need to levy on an annual basis 10% or more. If you really want to get ahead and build up some fund balance, I don't know if, if that's realistic. And the other thing that, you know, comes about is just our facilities in general. And with any project, whether it's wastewater, water or your city hall project, most often people look back at it, it may take 20 years and say that was a really good decision. And so hopefully we take the long view of, of some of our expenditures. But it is pretty amazing how expensive things are. It's not like county government. I'm just going to tell you that much right now because I worked in that environment. Building a mile of county road is not like building a mile of street. And we know that with South Sarat, or Saratoga Road, things like that. MMU, I'm glad that Don bought up, brought up that MMU is well-operated. We are probably the largest utility in the state, city utility in the state of Minnesota behind Rochester. And that's because of our major industry we have here. So we are a large utility. And also our wastewater is not small either. If you give tours of the city in Marshall and people look at population alone, they, they really surprise how large our wastewater treatment plan is. But again, it's our industry and, and so we, we have a lot of hidden, hidden obligations that may not be apparent when you just look at population and, and trying to compare it. But I know a lot has been said, so I will be quiet and turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. And thank you for your work. Now, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. We have a pre-construction meeting coming up for North First Street on April 21st. We'll meet with the contractor and utilities first and we'll follow with a meeting with the residents and business owners. I think at the last meeting I had said that we would be starting sometime around now and I, I misspoke. I believe the contractor wants to start sometime around early May, maybe end of April. So meeting not yet scheduled for James and Camden, but we're targeting end April or May. So nothing to report. Would answer any questions if there are some.
Any questions for Jason? If not, thank you. Dennis, we'll move to you before we entertain the closed session. Do you have anything, Don, closed?
No, just the closed session.
So the city attorney has requested that we enter in the closed session for purposes of pending litigation. Is there a motion to that effect?
Sold.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. You go in the closed session discussion? If not, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ La Bat?
Yes.
And Mazinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll pause for just a minute to close the doors and...